The Planning Commission meeting for April 9th. And I would like to ask you to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And item three on our agenda is our roll call. Chair Nemeth?
Here.
Vice Chair Avery?
Here.
Commissioner French? Commissioner Henderson?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you, we are all here. And item four on our agenda is the review of our agenda, Ms. Saxton. You have three minutes, no, just kidding. You can just yell really loud at us.
It's for, oh, I think I'm on now, okay. So, there has been a request from the applicant's attorney for item eight A requesting that this item be continued. Planning Commission has option to hear it tonight, or to continue it to a date certain, or continue it indefinitely. There should be the email on the dais for you for the reasons, for the request. If you have any questions, I am available.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we need to make a decision on that at this moment, or can we wait till the item comes up?
You can do it, you can do it either way, you can make a decision on whether to hear that now, or you can wait until the item is, it's the first item, so you don't have to wait long.
Okay, thank you. Do any commissioners have an opinion on that?
How do you, is that, you need to make a motion to choose an option, or?
We can.
Yeah, if you, if you elect to continue the item, then I would request that you make a motion to continue it now. Otherwise, if you make no motion and move on to the next item, then you'll be hearing the item, which is the first item on the agenda.
Perfect.
Okay. Substantive item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I was just, is there a reason why they are requesting for this to be extended? Because I missed the email.
I believe there's an email on the dais, I mean, essentially it relates to the COVID-19 situation and the state home order.
That was their reason.
Also, the attorney reached out. Kathy, can you confirm that the email is provided to our planning commissioners?
It was written in the notes of the... It was one we just did, most recently?
No. If you would like, I have the email here, I'm happy to read it to you, if you would like.
Not going, of your representation, thank you.
The attorney is here on the item, so, and watching livestream, we've been informed, so if the item is heard, they have been informed that they're allowed to step in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I would, I would say that we're, we've gone over this for three meetings. I think we're pretty well adept on what the issues are. I say it stays on the agenda.
Okay, then we will move on to item five. Motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions on the agenda?
So moved?
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you. That brings us to item six on our agenda, are there any public comments submitted for consent calendar items or items not on our agenda?
Yes, so, these comments might pertain to certain items, however, they didn't have item numbers, so we are including them under general comments. This was a comment received via voicemail that has been transcribed. Or actually, sorry, this is a comment that was received via text message. First of all, I am disappointed in the Planning Commission to have a meeting with such impact on local neighborhoods, schools, traffic, and safety for citizens of Palmdale. Very shady of the Planning Commission. You need to wait till the people of Palmdale can attend the open meeting and talk directly to you. Hope you do not make a decision tonight, Linda Davis, resident of Palmdale since 1972. Everyone is shut down, you should cancel your meetings to, until everyone can attend. The second comment. Hi, my name is Alexis Neal, and I am with, of many other friends in the unincorporated area of Palmdale, and I want to let you know that I think this is really stinky that you are doing. We have nice houses, and we have been here, most of us, for years and years, and we are on two and a half acres or more, and you are trying to put all this condensed housing in our area, and I am fed up. This is the only comments that we received under general comment.
So they're, they're not applying to any particular item on the agenda?
Because they did not indicate that they were for a particular agenda item, I don't know which item to categorize them, so we have put them in public record under general comment.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to our consent calendar, could I please get an approval of the minutes from our last, from our last meeting?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second. I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries, the minutes are approved. That brings us to our first public hearing, item eight A.
Just for a point of clarity for the record, this evening for this item, Scott Porter, the contract attorney with the city, will be advising the Planning Commission on this item. You may remember him from such items as accessory dwelling units. I will be advising staff for this item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dorn. And Fancy Technology, Scott Porter will be available via my cellphone. Thank you. Hi, Scott.
Hello.
This item will be presented by Mr. Sauter, thank you.
All right, good evening, Planning Commission. All right, so, the project is a request by the Planning Commission to review the existing conditions of ongoing operation of an amusement arcade known as Fishing Games, located here at 2550 East Palmdale Boulevard, and the purpose of the review is to determine the level of compliance with the conditions of approval, to determine if the business is being operated in an appropriate manner, and to determine whether sufficient evidence exists regarding non-compliance and ongoing operation to warrant modification or revocation of the CUP. On February 13th, Planning Commission reviewed a request for direction from staff with respect to the operation of Fishing Games. There was a memo random that was provided to the Planning Commission detailing incident crime reports from the LA County Sheriff's Department regarding crimes at this location. After review of the conditions of approval, specifically the applicant's failure to provide a security plan and incident crime reports, the Planning Commission directed staff to initiate a full investigation, which we have done now. And this application was originally approved in October of 2017, as CUP 17008. And we met on this item on March 12th, but the item was continued due to a lack of noticing. So here we are. So again, the purpose of this is to, is to determine whether or not Fishing Games is being operated in compliance with the conditions and in an appropriate manner. And outlined in the following slides, it has been determined that the business is in violation of several conditions of approval. We've also received a couple of different response letters from the applicant's attorney and representative going over how they are in compliance with these conditions. Staff has also supplied responses to both of those comment letters, saying how the, the project is still not in compliance with these conditions. So condition, the first condition of approval, condition eighteen, the business is in violation of condition eighteen and the PMC in regard to excessive window signage. The business is allowed one permanent, non-illuminated window sign not to exceed four square feet in area. Fishing Games may also have temporary window sign is not to exceed 25% of the window area, provided that visibility into the building is maintained. See, the business has been observed on multiple occasions with painted window signage and what appears to be heart wrapping paper that covers the majority of the windows. There also appears to be shade structures or, or shutters for either shade or security, which covers the top portion of the windows. The window coverings only leave a small portion of the bottom pane open to visibility for the business. A complaint was made to code enforcement regarding the excessive window signage was opened in February of 2019. Here, the picture shows that the signage still remained up in August of 2019. On February 19th of this year, the business was observed again with excessive window signage, with this time what appears to be the heart wrapping paper. The next condition they are in violation of is condition twenty-three in regard to sufficient interior lighting after dark. The business was observed after dark by LA County Sheriff's Department, and it did not appear as if the interior of the establishment was illuminated. It was observed again on a separate occasion by staff, again, same thing, there were no interior lights on. It was unclear if this was due to window coverings, or if the interior night lighting just did not exist. The applicant was also in violation of condition number twenty-four in regards to submitting a security plan. As of March, let's see, the applicant had not submitted a security plan as of March 5th, detailed in the memos, now they submitted a security plan. Let's see. Security plan, well, sorry, it was missing a security plan, and we'll go over what the new security plan covers in later slides. The business was also in violation of condition number twenty-five, because it is not registered in the Business Watch program, and it has not received merchant fraud training. The business is also in violation of condition number twenty-six. They have not scheduled a final crime prevention through environmental design inspection with our crime prevention division. They have actually scheduled a final walkthrough for March 23rd, but that was delayed due to the pandemic, and so that will be scheduled at a further time, or the future date. Here's a little more info just on what exactly the business operations are. Arcade fish games, as you know, are commonly referred to as fish games, and there's been a recent influx in these type of uses in the valley and in the state. They typically seat up to eight players, with each player having a joystick and buttons, and they get points for killing bigger fish. And in an effort to better understand these uses, staff actually met with the Department of Justice, and we went over several different, several different things with them, how to recognize fish games, how they operate, what constitutes an illegal gambling machine. And they also provided materials on what defines an illegal gambling machine. And basically, it's a machine must have three, basically, it has to accept cash, or any form of payment, there is some, it is mainly a game of skill, and they are rewarded with some sort of prize for playing. Fishing Games provides the opportunity for patrons to win cash based on a statement made by the applicant's representative at the Planning Commission meeting held on February 13th. Additionally, a Google search of the establishment provides a review from one person saving quick money, just what I like. There was also complaint made to code enforcement regarding a driver blocking the driveway in the 2500 block of East Palmdale Boulevard. The informant claimed that parking problems stemmed from a possible arcade business that he believed was just a front for a gambling hall. He complained about customers from Fishing Games entering his business almost daily, asking for change and to exchange jewelry for cash. The code enforcement officers proceeded to Fishing Games and noted that there was neither a business license displayed, nor a sign for the name of the business, which are both violations of the PMC. The officers inquired about the business license in which the manager called the owner of the store, who explained he was in the process of obtaining a business license. The officer then issued a notice of violation for an unlicensed business in September of 2017, and the CUP was later approved in October of 2017. This means the business was already in operation without a business license before the CUP was approved. Staff has provided documentation from the applicant detailing the business operations of Fishing Games, which indicated the names of games to be utilized. One of those games to be included is called Ocean King to Ocean Monster, and staff has included a report from Gaming Laboratories International detailing an analysis of the game. GLI specializes basically in determining if these games are used for gambling or not. They run a variety of tests, and they can decide whether or not the game is ultimately a game of chance or a game of skill. And the report for this particular game, Ocean King to Ocean Monster, determined that the dominant factor in the game was chance rather than a game of skill. So based on the meeting with the Department of Justice, the Google review, the statement made by the applicant's representative, the GLI report, the statements from the business owners and employees in immediate vicinity, Fishing Games appears to have machines where patrons can win cash from games of chance, which is considered gambling. There have also been incident crime reports for robbery, possession of controlled substance, loitering, and drug activity at Fishing Game Arcade. One of the reports details conversations with persons previously arrested for controlled substance-related offenses, stating that it is common to use or buy controlled substances from other patrons inside Fishing Games. At this location in particular, there were no arrests and only two calls for service in a four-year period from February 2013 to 2017. Since Fishing Games began operating in February of 2017, there have been a total of seven calls for service and twelve arrests. Six arrests were made for warrants, and six arrests were made for narcotics. The memorandum from the LA County Sheriff's Department shows that there has been an increase in crimes, specifically in narcotics-related arrests made at this location since Fishing Games has been in operation. Deputy Murphy also spoke with businesses adjacent to Fishing Games who observed narcotics activities taking place in the parking lot and in vehicles. An employee from a neighboring business stated that he has found several needles. Specifically, one employee states that two patrons from Fishing Games came into his business to take out a loan to gamble at the Tap Tap next door. Tap Tap is another common name for these establishments due to the tapping noise that they make when they are pressing the buttons. An employee from another business stated she heard customers within her business talking about how they just won $800. All right, and then we get to the letter from Ms. Monica Romallo Young. So staff received a letter on March 10th, addressed to the Planning Commission, that included several comments addressing the potential revocation. She had responses to the memo, and we have responded to her letter. So, comment one of the letter says that the Commission failed to provide proper notice. The meeting was postponed due to this, and the applicant has been given the proper noticing this time around. Comment two states that Fishing Games is in compliance with condition eighteen regarding the excessive window signage. Fishing Games has removed the excessive window signage after distribution of the staff report. Comment three states that the business is in compliance with condition twenty-three regarding the use of interior nightlights to sufficiently light the business after close. The letter argues that Fishing Games leaves interior lights on after dark. The business was observed on two occasions without the sufficient lighting, and as we stated earlier, this could be unclear due to the security shutters that have been provided at the business. So, the applicant or the business should find a way to properly secure their business with shutters or whatever they would like, along with still complying with the condition. Comment four states that Fishing Games is in compliance with condition twenty-four regarding the security plan. A security plan has been submitted, or was submitted, and our crime prevention division reviewed it, pointed out some insufficiencies with the plan. They have submitted another new security plan, and in the memo before you, Carrie has provided comments on the security plan as well, asking for some clarification regarding how funds are transferred and their staffing. So, better revisions, but still not up to par. Carrie still has some questions about the security plan. Comment five states that Fishing Games is compliant with condition twenty-five, stating that the business is registered in the Business Watch program and is scheduled for merchant fraud training. The business, the applicant scheduled the crime prevention through environmental design to be on March 23rd. The applicant may be confusing this inspection with the Business Watch program and merchant fraud training. Staff has confirmed with public safety that the applicant has still not registered in the Business Watch program or scheduled merchant fraud training as of today. Comment six states that Fishing Games is compliant with condition twenty-six in regard to scheduling, oh, yeah, the crime prevention through environmental design, which we just discussed. It was scheduled on March 23rd, but rescheduled due to pandemic. There has not been an official date for that set at this point. Comment seven says that the arcade games inside Fishing Games are not gambling devices, because they're games of skill. The GLI report attached in the memorandum states that the dominating factor for these games is in fact skill. And, you know, although the machines may require manual dexterity and hand-eye coordination to play, they are still games of chance. The GLI report specifically concluded that the success of a player is based primarily on a chance-driven series of events in which the player is unable to affect the game outcome and overall monetary return beyond the chance determined outcomes made available to the player. Comment eight states that the staff report fails to establish a pattern of crime attributable to Fishing Games. The letter claims that the loitering activity and crime detailed in the LA County Sheriff's Department memo cannot be linked to Fishing Games because it occurred in a parking lot. The sheriff's memo and testimony from neighboring businesses describes patrons leaving Fish and Games and then being arrested in the parking lot. The memo also includes conversations with persons stating that it is common to use or buy controlled substances from patrons in the establishment. The letter argued that, the letter argues that the staff report fails to describe the businesses that were in the shopping center prior to Fishing Games as a vacant shopping center would have less pedestrian traffic, and therefore less crime. However, staff confirmed that the majority of the shopping center was occupied in those four years prior to the start of Fishing Games. Therefore, there is an identifiable increase in crime that correlates with the introduction of Fishing Games into the shopping center. The letter further argues that staff report fails to mention the majority of arrests were made as a result of observation contacts. This means that deputies were on-site and had casual encounters or conversations with citizens that then led to an arrest in some cases. A regular police presence in another shopping center may have a similar outcome of arrests made to police-initiated actions. However, the increase in calls for service in the shopping center after the introduction of Fishing Games warranted the increased police presence. The attorney's letter concludes stating that staff report fails to provide or prove a basis for provoking the CUP, and requests the Planning Commission reject the recommendation of revocation. Fishing Games Arcade is in violation of several conditions of approval and is not being operated in an appropriate manner, because it is not beneficial and desirous to the community, and it is adversely affecting adjacent properties due to the crimes associated with the business. This type of arcade is indicative of a gambling establishment that attracts other crimes such as narcotics activity. The business has been a nuisance to other properties in the vicinity and in the parking lot. As detailed in the LA County Sheriff's Department memo, the business will not be beneficial and desirous to the community even with strict adherence to the conditions of approval, because the evidence indicates that the establishment is associated with narcotics and other criminal activity. Furthermore, the applicant failed to comply with several of their conditions even after they were notified, such as the window signage. They were also in operation several months before the approval of the CUP or the business license. And lastly, the applicant has a history of violating the conditions of approval and the PMC, so new conditions imposed on the business will likely be ignored, and therefore not a viable solution to remediate or prevent the negative impacts of the business. Therefore, it is recommended the Planning Commission revoke the CUP and order the business to cease and to cease from using the subject property as an arcade. So the Planning Commission has three options tonight. Option one is to adopt the resolution revoking the CUP based on the findings in the draft resolution. Option two is to find that the use is not being conducted in compliance with the terms and conditions of the CUP in an appropriate manner, and therefore modify the conditions as necessary. Option three is to find that the CUP is conducted in compliance with the terms and conditions in an appropriate manner, and that no action to modify or revoke the CUP is necessary. Option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation, available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time?
I do. So, did the city, getting to the window signage issue, did the city or... Did the city um or code enforcement from City Palmdale? Talk to them about that and say, hey, this is not supposed to be there or were pictures just being taken over the course of time?
That is a great question. I, obviously there's the pictures because we have the pictures. I, I don't know if an actual notice of violation was given out for the window signage. Um and I was unable to confirm if the code enforcement officer actually talked to the applicant letting them know.
And my other question is, so. They, they op, they were operating for ten months according to my math without a CUP. How does that happen? I mean, if, if, if I open a liquor store and don't get a CUP and I'm selling booze for ten months. Uh nobody notices that. And, and they, they should have known that that, they needed a CUP, right?
Yeah, I'm unsure. Possibly because there was no signage on the building. Maybe people didn't realize. I can't officially answer that.
I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around how you operate for ten months on something like that that's supposed to have a CUP. That's all, that's all the questions I have.
And if I heard you right, they didn't have a business license either.
Correct.
So they just opened a business in a vacant building? That, that's the part I'm trying to understand too.
Actually, I have one more question that goes with it. Do they have a business license now?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other technical questions for staff?
Let's, yeah, along Bart's question, were any of the other violations noticed to them as it went? Because a lot of these went back to the early days when the, after the CUP was approved. So like the signage and, and not uh taking care of business watch and all of that. Were they noticed for all of that? I mean, obviously it's, they're supposed to do it, but were they noticed about any of that that they were in violation?
Um I, I don't believe they were noticed. Um that is something that um some of those conditions are. Um they would need to talk to public safety and schedule those inspections. And um I, I don't know if there is some system to remind the applicant that they need to. Enroll in the business watch program that they need to contact for inspection.
So um as part of the conditions of approval that the business signs. Um that was a condition of approval that they committed to and that was part of their original CUP. Um as uh Carrie Jorvan spoke, I believe previously and um she might elaborate if I misspeak, please come up and correct me. Um it is uh upon the applicant to reach out to the city to register for those programs. Um so as part of their CUP, they do sign saying, I know that this is my responsibility. And um as you know, the city isn't a policing organization, so. We have to commit to when somebody signs that they're going to comply that, that, that's on their responsibility to do.
Alright, thank you very much. Then at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward. And are there speaker slips available? Okay, um but since we probably already know who you are, it's okay. Come on forward, state your name and you will have three minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to hear um from, from me on behalf of my client fishing game. Um first, just very briefly, um as my letter to, in, in response to the staff report stated. The signage issue has been fixed. Um the lights have been fixed. I think part of the problem might be that they have security shutters. Um so that you can't see the light when it's on, but if you want them open, they can, they can leave them open. The security plan, um they submitted a revised security plan. There's not much guidance on how to submit. Uh on, on what needs to be included in the security plan. My clients are not sophisticated business people. They're willing to work with you to answer whatever questions they, they have, you have. Um but they've submitted the, the security plan to the best of their ability. Um likewise, uh there, they believe that when they, they called to schedule the business. Uh the business watch and the merchant fraud. Program, they, they thought, they thought that they had tried to schedule both, but then were told that they'd have to call back after the, the pandemic issue was, was. Resolved to um to have those uh scheduled. Same with the inspection. They said that they, they had to call back. It could be that they, they didn't get the specifics on the merchant, the business watch, but they are willing to do that. Um as far as the uh, the games. Again, the report that I saw, the GLI, GLI report refers to, discusses another, another game completely. Um the games that, that our client has, that my client has in fishing game are not the ones that are described in the report. It would use, basing the legality of these games on that report would be like saying. You know, they used to say pin, pinball machines didn't used to have flippers. And those, the pinball machines without the flippers are considered games of chance because all it is is where the ball's gonna bounce. Once they put the flippers in, then they become games of skill and are legal. So compare, using that GLI report to compare to the, to, to compare the games that are in my client's business, it's, it's. To, uh, an inaccurate comparison. And we're more than willing to have um. Have the city come in and analyze our games to take our games to GLI to show them what the games really are and you'll, you'll see that they are games of skill. Uh predominantly skill and not a chance. As far as the DOJ's uh. Uh interpretation of what is legal, the, the Department of Justice doesn't interpret the laws. It enforces them. If you look at the uh, the case law. Um the case law says that as long as it's predominantly a game of skill, then they're legal. And that's if you were to analyze the games, they are skill games and legal. Um regardless of, of cash prizes being awarded. Again, in my memo, I lay out the, the law that says that cash prizes are, are legal. Under California law. Um as far as the nuisance issues. Um you know, our investigation, may, may I be given?
I actually think, I, I have read your um response to their uh information. I think you were very thorough in that. And we all did receive that. So if, if you're reiterating what's already in your response, then we, we have all had an opportunity to read it.
Just one other thing that wasn't in my response because our, our uh initial investigation of this revealed that, for example. We've been informed that one of the clerks in the neighboring businesses is selling meth pipes. So I don't know how well of an, how good of an investigation the police have done is to see if there's other, other causes for. For the drug, the alleged drug use in the parking lot. It could be that there are other causes and it's not necessarily. As I said before, when I was here last time, these reports are all based on hearsay.
Um, thank you very much. Alright, is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Alright, may I get a motion to close the public hearing? Alright, I have a motion and a second. If there is no objection, I shall close the public hearing on this item. Alright, Commissioner discussion.
Comments, 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 shall I? Alright, I will. Um I have some deep concerns about this. I asked about whether they'd been noticed or not. Uh because, not, because it's not their responsibility, because it absolutely is. Um but I was curious if they had been told anything prior, if they had done anything about it. Um they were operating without a business license, they were operating without a CUP. Uh they haven't complied with many of the conditions of the CUP until. They were told that there was going to be a hearing and then suddenly they're rushing to comply. And that, that bothers me. They may not be sophisticated businessmen. Uh but they did open a business here in Palmdale and they need to comply with the CUP. And so I do have uh a deep concern about them continuing. Um and following any conditions that may be imposed from here on forward. Uh whether they will fully comply, if at all. So. All of the other stuff notwithstanding, just their compliance itself is an issue.
I think if, um if we just took one of these um violations here and there. Um each one of them by themselves, maybe be something that maybe could be rectified or, you know. May not be such a big deal, but in the totality of all of this evidence. That staff has compiled over months and months. Uh I don't know if you'd normally put this much effort into contacting experts and the Department of Justice and the Sheriff's Department. Um it just seems like the totality of all of this together. Seems like a pretty negative impact just to the health and safety of the community. You know, in many different ways. So um I have a problem with it too.
So I will make a comment with respect to what we have here. Um I've looked at this backwards and forwards and tried to look at it from both perspectives. I understand as a business, the business needs to try to exist and thrive as much as possible. But also it requires conditions that uh, that they have to comply with. And from looking at the report that I see, um and also taking into consideration the attorney's representation of the client. Um it would appear to me that they did not comply with the uh conditions. And I think that's very important and I recognize that they made a diligent effort to try to comply at the last minute. However, that calls into question what they would do if we sought to extend. Another opportunity for them to comply with conditions. I don't think there's a foreseeable inclination that they in fact would do that. And so I would be reluctant to um grant them another opportunity to extend their CUP. So those are my reservations on it.
Thank you very much. I, I did wanna make a comment. I know that, um I believe the representative talked about. That GLI had not tested the games that are specific to that location. But in looking at from June twenty seventeen. The Ocean King two game was one that was tested and I know that is one that's on the list from the applicant. So I know that is one and then a monster Ocean King. And I believe those were in the list of games tested by GLI. And based on their determination to be um games of chance. And I would echo what the other commissioners have said. I am concerned. That A, there was an illegal operation of the business to begin with and then B, last minute uh trying to comply. I know that I was here when we originally approved this CUP. And I have a pretty good track record of always asking the applicant, have you read and do you understand the conditions of approval? And most of them agree to that. And so I. I understand running a business, there's a lot of fine print, there's a lot of details, but if, if you're going to do business in our city, I would recommend. That you read and follow everything and try to comply with it to the best of your ability. So um based on what I have seen presented from staff and all the reports that we've been reading. I believe that. They would probably not necessarily follow all of our rules and conditions in the future too. So I would not be um willing to allow this to continue in our community. Any other comments? And if there are none, may I get a motion?
Like the motion to adopt resolution number PC twenty twenty zero twelve revoking the CUP based on the findings contained in the draft resolution.
Second, sorry.
I have a motion from Commissioner French and a second from Commissioner Smith. Is there any discussion on the motion? I think it's on our screens now if we've joined the meeting. I don't think everybody joined the meeting though. Even though it looks like you're here, you're not really here. You gotta do that one. He's not quite in there yet. Let's go back. Alright, now I really should have a motion in a second.
Ah, there we go.
And there it is. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner French and a second from Commissioner Smith. If there's no further discussion, I will call for the question. Maybe I didn't call out enough. Now I've called for a question. Try yours again, Jesse. Uh, I think I did. I'm using my special little pushy thing. Okay. Alright, let the record reflect that the motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. And that will move us to item eight B.
This item will also be presented by uh Mr. Sauter.
Alright. Here we have a project for a parcel map, a variance and a site plan review. The applicant is requesting to subdivide one parcel into four commercial lots. Reduce the required lot width for one of those parcels and construct a four story hotel on the northwest parcel. The project site is located on the southwest corner of the Arnold Valley Freeway and Avenue Q. And it is within the Palmdale Trade and Commerce Specific Plan. The site is currently vacant and has been highly disturbed from human encroachment. You can see there's different trails and whatnot. The parcel to be divided is approximately sixteen acres and will be divided into four lots for commercial use. Parcel one is designated for the hotel development and the other three lots currently do not have any development proposed. Access into the subdivision is provided from Corporate Court connecting to Avenue Q. And from West Park Drive connecting to Fifth Street West. The variance is a request to reduce the minimum lot width requirement for parcel one. Because the intersection of Corporate Court and Avenue Q creates a corner lot that is a unique piano shape. As such, the lot width is measured on Avenue Q. Per PMC section seventeen sixteen, the lot width is eighty feet where one hundred and fifty feet is required. However, however, parcel one varies in width from eighty feet at the bottleneck portion to three hundred and fifty feet at the largest portion of the parcel. For an average of two hundred and fifteen feet wide. The variance is necessary due to the unique circumstances and shape of the parcel. And strict adherence to the minimum lot width would deprive the property of the ability to be subdivided. Which is a privilege of other parcels within the immediate vicinity. The proposed building is a four story hotel with one hundred and twenty-three rooms. And includes all improvements necessary to support the development such as paving, lighting and landscaping. Access into the site is provided from two driveways on Corporate Court. The site and hotel development meet or exceed all specific plan standards. The elevations have been designed to ensure four sided architecture with projections and recesses, varying roof lines. And varying materials such as stucco and stone veneer. The entrance to the hotel is covered with a wood portico chair. And the project will utilize earth tone colors such as beige and gray, which are encouraged by our general plan. Um in the center of the west elevation, there appears to be some roof mounted equipment that is not screened by the parapet. All roof mounted equipment must be screened from public view, so the project has been conditioned to provide an updated elevation. To ensure that all roof mounted equipment will be screened. Here are the first and second floor plans of the hotel. Um and the third and fourth story are the. Um, and the third and fourth story are the same as the second story. The planning commission has three options tonight. Option one is to adopt the resolution approving the parcel map, the variance and the site plan review and adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, finding that the project will not result in a significant impact to the environment. Option two is to continue the project. Option three is to deny the project. Option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Then at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on the item, please come forward and state your name and you will have three minutes to speak on the item. Is the applicant here?
And, uh, just for the record, there were no public comments received electronically for this item.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Then may I please get a motion to close the public hearing on this item? Second. I have a motion, a second. If there's no objection, then I will close the public hearing on this item. Commissioner, discussion?
We're just, um, we're just addressing the, um, um, the land partitioning. But will this come back again for, um, any more review or is this the only time it'll?
Yeah, this is the site plan as well. The site plan review, the variance and the, uh, map.
So, once it's done here, it doesn't come back before the building goes up, we're good?
Correct, yeah. So, I think the variance is definitely warranted because that is such an odd shaped land. And if we didn't grant it, then it would give other people special privileges. This one does not, so. I don't have a problem with the variance and if we need more hotels in town, I think that's a good thing.
Nice name.
You like the name?
It's a nice name for a hotel. I'll make a motion. Uh, I, I moved to adopt resolution PC twenty twenty dash zero one seven, approving tentative parcel map eight two three six one variance nineteen dash zero zero one. And site plan review nineteen dash zero zero eight and adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting plan, finding that the project will not result in a significant impact to the environment. Second.
Go ahead. We'll let Angela have it since it's her last.
Very excited about it.
I have a, uh, motion by Commissioner Avery and a second by Commissioner French. Is there any discussion on the motion? We don't have an option yet to push them on our screen. Oh, okay. The motion option is not on our screen. I'm not lying, I promise. You should not trust me, young man. Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Avery and a second from Commissioner French. So if there's no further discussion on the motion, we will call for the question. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. Alright, that brings us to item eight C.
Good evening. I will be presenting this item on behalf of Mr. Sauter, who, um, I have asked to go home for, uh, to have less people in the room. So this is conditional use permit nineteen dash zero one seven, um, Thanos Fitness. The applicant was requesting to relocate and expand an existing fitness center within the same shopping center on the southeast corner of Palmdale Boulevard and Ten Street West. Thanos Fitness was originally approved by the planning commission December of two thousand and eighteen um, at an adjacent suite, um, at eight four four West Palmdale Boulevard. It's now proposing to relocate within a larger tenant space, um, just adjacent. Thanos Fitness will continue to provide a variety of services including workout classes, coaching, weight training, cardio, powerlifting and nutrition classes. The use will be entirely within the existing building and there are no site improvements or exterior upgrades proposed. The fitness center requires a total of forty-three parking spaces and the rest of the center requires a hundred and three. The shopping center only contains a hundred and twenty-nine spaces, meaning there is a deficit. Although the center has not experienced any parking issues, I'm sure when you drive by, um, as many of us do, you can see that. Um, the planning commission may approve the use with parking deficient as long as it, a suitable area exists onsite to provide additional parking spaces. And as indicated on the slide, um, there are some additional areas adjacent to the, um, the units. The site has been posted, um, in compliance with our code. The planning commission have some options tonight. The first option is to adopt the resolution approving the fitness center and find the project as exempt from environmental review. Another option is to continue the project and direct staff to return with additional information. Um, another option is to deny the project. Option one is recommended. I am available for any questions. The applicant is also here, um, if you have any questions for him.
Thank you very much, Ms. Saxton.
Thank you.
Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Alright, thank you. Then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on the item, please come forward and state your name and you will have three minutes to speak.
And there were no, uh, public comments received electronically on this item either. Thank you very much.
My name is Richard, um, owner and head coach. Uh, so I'm here presenting my, my gym. If you have any questions, please ask.
Will there be any karate going on?
No, but, but they are coming back. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, uh, they're, they're taking my, my old spot. So they're coming back.
So business is going well?
It is going good. I, well, fortunately. It is. So, and that's why we're expanding. Um, that, that little twenty-one hundred square foot, uh, I just grew out of it quick. So now, next door.
And have you had any issues with your neighbors? I know that was one of our concerns when you.
No, not at all. They actually love it because I'm bringing business to them too. Because, you know, from gym, they go to Karen's Kitchen or they go to our stack and they just eat up.
Alright, okay. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? I guess there really technically shouldn't be, huh? Alright, then may I please get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. If there is no objection, I will close this public hearing. Commissioner, discussion?
I remember when we approved this, it was right after we'd approved the medical center for that area. And I was real concerned about this gym going in there and I'm real glad to see that you guys are doing very, very well there. So I think it's great.
May I get a motion on this item?
I would love to make the motion, actually. It would help if you put it up there. I know, I had it here. I had it at the beginning. Thanks. Um, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number PC twenty twenty, uh, zero one three approving a fitness center use and find that the project is exempt from environmental review.
Second, yeah. I have a motion from Commissioner French and a second from Commissioner Smith. Now I really do. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, then I will call for the question. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much and congratulations. You may now run, run quickly. Thank you. Alright, then that will bring us to item eight D.
Yep, uh, I will be presenting this item on behalf of, uh, Planner Skip Smith. So this is a conditional use permit and a site plan review. The applicant, um, has submitted a request to expand the interior of the existing convenience store um, and, or modifying the building and construct other minor upgrades to the site. The subject property consists of a twenty-four hour convenience store with current alcohol or current sales of alcohol um, and maintains a type twenty off sale beer and wine license. Um, their square footage for the alcohol sales will not change as part of this application. Um, the property also currently houses approximately two thousand square foot retail tenant space adjacent to the convenience store in addition to the self-serve, uh, mobile gas station. Here's some photos of the site in which, the photo on the left is a view of the facility from the southwest corner, corner. Um, while the photo on, sorry, on the left, the photo on the right shows the east elevation of the existing retail tenant space and twenty-four hour convenience store. The project proposes to eliminate the tenant space to make room for the expanded convenience store to allow the space for more grocery products options. Um, so essentially the photo on the right, um, shows the convenience store as well. There's on the left, it's gonna be, um, a window versus a door. We'll talk about that a little bit more during the floor plan. Pursuant to the PMC revision or modification to an approved CUP such as an expansion must be processed through the major modification, which is why this is in front of you tonight. Because there's no, um, record of entitlement for the site plan review. That is why this is here tonight. Here are some interior photos of the existing twenty-four hour convenience store. Here's some, the floor plan. Um, on the left is the existing floor plan. On the right is the proposed. As you can see, um, the proposed eliminates that retail space and just combines all of the convenience store. And as I said before, you can see that the alcohol sales remains the same. In addition to modifying the convenience store interior, the project proposal includes upgrades to the exterior um, as depicted here. There's gonna be a new storefront window on the east elevation, new decorative steel awnings and corrugated metal roof to complement the existing rooftop, new wall lights, new thin brick to be installed above the storefront entrance on the east elevation as well as on the section on the north elevation of Columbia Way. New earth tone color paint to unify and upgrade the exterior of the convenience store and fuel canopy, a new accessible path of travel from the store entrance, the existing accessible parking spaces and upgrade trash, an upgraded trash enclosure, um, in compliance with our Palmdale Municipal Code and new decorative bollards to be installed over the existing bollards. Planning commission has some options. First option is to adopt the resolution approving the CUP major modification number one and site plan review and find that the previously adopted negative declaration adequately addresses the project or to continue the item and direct staff to return with additional information or to deny the project. Option one is recommended. The site has been properly signed here. I am available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Saxton. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Alright, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. Were there any items, any communications submitted electronically for this?
I believe nothing on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Public hearing is open. So if anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Andrew Pasturko. I'm the architect with the project and I also have the owner of the project here available. And I don't have, uh, anything to add to the staff report. I really appreciate the cooperation, be happy to staff and, uh, we will be available for any questions you might, you might have.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? So you've read and understood all of the conditions and?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, ma'am.
Alright, and if there were no electronic submissions for public hearing comments, then I would like to get a motion to close the public hearing. I have a motion. And I have a second. So if there's no objection, then we'll declare this public hearing closed. Alright, Commissioner, discussion? I like the design. I thought it was really, um, it's kind of, I, I think it's a good thing right now in particular to have extra grocery space in our community personally. Um, and I, I think this is a good use of space and the fact that they're not expanding the alcohol component is probably a bonus as well. But I like the design and I think it'll be very good.
I agree. I don't have additional comments on that. I concur.
Alright, may I get a motion?
I'll move to adopt resolution PC twenty twenty dash zero one five approving CUP ninety-seven dash two, major modification number one and site plan review twenty dash zero zero two and find that the project is consistent with the previously approved negative declaration.
Alright, I have a motion from Commissioner Avery and a second from Commissioner French. Is there any discussion on the motion? Alright, then we shall call for the question. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. Congratulations and thank you very much. And I'm going to kindly ask you to leave. Alright, then that will bring us to item eight E.
This item will be presented by Ms. Tigger.
Oh, you got tired, huh? You said I'm gonna sit down now. Spotlight's all yours now.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, there.
Okay, the proposed project is a request to develop a three hundred and twenty unit apartment complex with sixty units of triplexes and forty-eight detached single-family residences on a vacant site. The site is located on approximately thirty-three acres on the northeast corner of Rancho Vista Boulevard and Twentieth Street West. The, um, here is the, the site plan. Basically, I just wanted to show it early on because I'm gonna be going into detail and I wanted you to have a visual. Um, the pointer doesn't work here, but up in the top left corner are the detached single-family residences. The triplexes are off to the east on the top left corner. And then all across the bottom portion of the site, which is adjacent to Rancho Vista and Twentieth, are the apartment, uh, portion of the project. Um, the project proposes two tentative maps. The first is for the single-family residences. Um, this is to provide, uh, excuse me, to subdivide approximately ten acres of the site into, uh, forty-eight single-family lots for forty-eight detached single-family residences and one detention basin. Um, given that it doesn't meet the minimum lot dimension requirement specified within the municipal code, the applicant is requesting approval of a planned development document, which will modify, um, those requirements and allows some sort of flexibility with the design of the project. So within this portion of the project, um, the minimum lot size is about forty-seven hundred square feet. For the second tentative map, um, it will consolidate the remaining twenty-three acres of the site into one parcel, um, which will separate the triplex and apartment portions of the project from the single-family residential portion of the project. Um, the, this parcel does exceed the current lot, um, size requirements for the R three zone, um, which is proposed. One thing I do want to point out is, um, a condition of approval that's being placed on this map is that there's an existing easement that currently runs, um, through buildings eleven and eight, as noted here on the screen. And that easement is required to be vacated. It's a thirty-two foot wide easement. Um, and if for some reason it cannot be vacated, the site plan is gonna have to be modified, which could be a major modification, minor modification, um, depending on the extent of, of reconfiguration of the site plan. The project also proposes a general plan amendment. The existing, um, designation allows zero to two dwelling units per acre. And under this current density, the site could accommodate a maximum of sixty-six dwelling units. Um, with the amendment, the proposal is to change the designation to multifamily residential, which allows ten point one to sixteen dwelling units per acre. And with the, um, four hundred and twenty-eight units proposed, that's a density of about thirteen dwelling units per acre. The project also includes a zone change to be consistent. The project also includes a zone change to be consistent with the proposed general plan land use designation. So the existing zoning for the property is R1 20,000, which requires minimum lot sizes of 20,000 square feet. And in order to ensure consistency with the new general plan land use designation, the R3 zone is proposed. As I mentioned before, a plan development document is also proposed to encourage some flexibility with the design. It is a comprehensive master plan for the entire development. It outlines specific development standards, design guidelines, methods for implementation of the project, and it provides some flexibility while ensuring that development is cohesive. The document proposes to decrease the landscape setbacks along the residential portion of the project, decrease the building and accessory structure setbacks, increase lot coverage within the apartment portion of the site, reduce lot size for the single-family portion of the site, and reduce the minimum square feet per unit within the triplex, excuse me, an apartment portion of the project. It also increases the number of amenities, reduces private open space, increases overall common open space, you know, this is like a long, this is all in your staff report, reduces parking for the entire site, reduces the number of trash enclosures, and decreases the distance the residents can walk from their unit to their trash enclosures within the apartment portion of the site. The plan development document also provides specific requirements for architecture such as massing, articulation, allowed colors and materials. Here's an example of the design of the single-family residence. And here we have the triplexes and apartments. As you, as you can see, the architecture is different in each portion of the site, but it's complementary and compatible throughout. The building materials are stucco, stone veneer, wood trim, and concrete roof tile. The color palette is beige and gray with some red and blue, and there's gray and tan stone veneer, and there's varying roof pitches. The architectural styles, colors, massing, they've all taken the existing residences in the area into consideration to make sure that the development will tie into the existing neighborhoods. So moving on to the site plan, as I mentioned earlier, it includes development of 48 detached single-family residences. There's 20 two-story triplex buildings, each containing three units, obviously triplex, and 19 two-story apartment buildings. The single-family residences, triplexes, and apartments are intended to be sold at market rate, and they, their amenities distributed throughout the site that all future residents can use in each location of the project. And some of these amenities include basketball courts, swimming pool, clubhouse, picnic areas, barbecues, tot lots, hammock farms, and a putting green. Two new driveways will be constructed, one on Rancho Vista Boulevard and one on 20th Street West. A second access point is proposed from 20th Street West into the single-family residential portion of the project to accommodate fire apparatus. And a condition, as you'll notice, there is a portion of the site that is not considered a part of the project. There's a condition of approval that's placed on the project that's requiring the developer of this site to provide future access to that site through a recorded easement. The pedestrian access will be provided through the site, I'll go to my exhibit here. So pedestrian access will be provided to all portions of the site and all residents will be able to access all portions of the site. There are 947 parking spaces, which complies with the plan development document requirements. So the project is anticipated to be phased into three phases, starting with the apartments and then the townhomes and finally the single-family residences. All of the on- and off-site improvements necessary to support each phase will be constructed when that phase is constructed, with the exception that all of the public improvements will be constructed with phase one. In addition, there's two drainage basins, one in the apartment, excuse me, one in the triplex portion and one in the single-family residential portion. Those are needed for the apartment portion of the project for drainage, so those basins will be constructed, but the amenities will not be constructed until the phase associated with that area is constructed. So pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, initial study has been prepared for the proposed project. It analyzed impacts to, um, sorry, analyzed all the environmental impacts, and impacts, mitigation measures for biological resources, cultural resources, geology soils, noise, and tribal resources were included to reduce impacts to a less insignificant level. Prior to this meeting, you received a memorandum on the DIAS. There was a comment letter that was received from the fire department after the close of the, the comment period. That memo, excuse me, that letter mainly includes standard conditions of approval that the fire department would place on the project anyway, so it's just been provided to you for information. Staff did receive some comment memos during the comment period for the initial study. There were, I believe, three of them. They were attached to the document and minor edits were made to the document to accommodate those letters. So with that, you have a couple options here. The first would be to adopt the draft resolution recommending city council approval of the general plan amendment and zone change and approving the tentative maps, plan development document, and the site plan review, and adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program. The second would be to continue the item and the third would be to deny. Option one is recommended, and that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Taggart. Do the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time?
I do. Thank you, Ms. Taggart, for your detailed report. I appreciate that. You mentioned that there was, that there's a market rate. You said it so fast, I couldn't catch which one you were referring to, the triplex or apartment, or is it all of them that they can have?
Um, I'm sure that the, the owners can better speak about that, but as far as I'm aware, all, the entire project is intended to be market rate development.
Entire project's market, okay. Thank you so much.
I have a question for you. On the map, it looks like Q12 is wide at the top and then through this development it narrows to about half its width. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Um, engineering can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but that, it's Avenue O12 is intended, I believe, to be vacated as part of this project. And so the project actually goes to the center line of Avenue O12.
Okay, that's what it'll look like up there. Okay, that is the, okay.
Single-family residences, will those be considered site condos or just PUDs? Or, I mean, are they going to have those little short driveways like the project over on Division and, and O?
So it's, it's a, it would be a normal detached, single-family suburban residential neighborhood, just condensed. So they each have their own individual driveways and, you know, access from and a looped road, and they each own their individual lot.
And will they have like a homeowners association and homeowners dues?
Yes, there's going to be a homeowners association that's separate from the apartments and triplexes. The apartments and triplexes will be under management, and then the single family will be under an association.
And is there any kind of a, I don't know, plans for access for that to go through to get to the development that's going to be there on 15th and, uh, what do they, what do they call that, where the grocery store is going to be?
15th and Rancho Vista. No, no, there is not.
So no connection to get to there?
No.
Because we're increasing the density quite a bit here. It'd be nice to connect it to the shopping.
So that little vacant not apart, part?
City owners.
The not apart part?
Correct. It's the area right in the middle there. I think the owners can better speak to that.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other technical questions for staff?
Yeah, I just had, just some minor things that, like, like he was saying, we're, we're, we definitely need housing like this, but I have a concern, every, every setback, every sizing, every, everything is being reduced for this project, and it feels like we're cramming a whole bunch of stuff into a very little space. And so I have some questions, I mean, some of it, parking is part of it, but the trashcans, we really think they only need one-third of the trashcans that we normally require? That's, that's a concern. Where's all that trash going to go? I mean, it sounds silly maybe, but there are short 22 trash bins out of 32 that should be there. That's a lot of trash to be going nowhere. And so it's just, we need this, but I just want to make sure that as we build these things, we build them right, and, and that the, you know, these different things that we do, we don't try and, um, put too many of them in too small of a space is part of the concern that I have. There's a wall on the outside that the maximum height of that wall normally is three feet, and they want it to be six. Why is that?
Um, well, the only proposed walls are on the north and the west adjacent to the existing single-family res, or excuse me, the proposed single-family residential portion of the site. The rest of the site is going to be wrought iron fencing. In some locations, there might be combination low-wall fencing due to noise concerns, but, but the apartment portion is intended to be open.
Yeah, it says in the residential area that the obscuring wall will be six feet, six feet.
Yes, that's, yeah, it's really just next to the single-family residences along 20th.
And is that to block off 20th?
It's, it's to treat it like a normal single-family residential neighborhood where their rear yards have a block wall and they have their own private open space.
And will the, will the housing in between, will the houses how, are these, I mean, I'm thinking of these more like garden homes where they don't really have yards, they're just?
They have small yards, yards that's about 900 square feet.
Okay, and they'll have normal walls around them like houses do?
Correct.
Six-foot walls and all that.
So as they were going through and designing this project and shrinking all this density down, were we getting compensated for that reduction with common area amenities that were enough to compensate for shrinking the density?
They are providing more common amenities than would be required if you combine everything together, so knowing that a resident that lives in the single-family portion of the project can walk to the pool and use that pool, everyone is using the amenities. So when you combine everything together, they do have more than what the code requires as far as common amenities go, and they do provide significantly more amenities than what would be required for a project of this size.
Oh, I thought it said that they had, that there was deviation of to less amenities. Did I read that wrong? Is it actually two more?
Two more.
Okay.
Where were the, um, the reduction in the landscape setbacks at?
Sorry, let me check my notes here.
And was that to push the buildings closer to the lot lines?
Single-family residential. Page 10.
Reduction of 10 feet along 20th Street West adjacent to the single-family residential portion.
You said page 10?
Page 10.
So this is because, um, because we're changing the zone to R3. R3 has different standards than a normal detached, single-family like an R1 zone. So in R1, you wouldn't have this setback requirement from an arterial, but because this is a multifamily zone, you have an increased setback, so that's why they're requesting a deviation. So really, the location of the buildings would be consistent with other single-family residences in the area.
Also, as the planning commissioner is aware, we do have arena allocation that this, with our next arena allocation, we are increasing by thousands of units, so projects like this do help in meeting those arena allocations that are put out.
Thank you. Any other technical questions for staff? Okay, well, thank you very much. Then at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. And were there any submissions of public comments?
There were quite a few, so bear with me. I have some of them on my phone and some of them to physically read. Or I will be reading all of them, but I'm hopping back and forth. So a anonymous comment is, "We live in a desert. What is the impact to our limited water supplies? And now in the future with this massive proposed development, what is being done to mitigate this issue? What is the impact of the development to the quality of life, safety, and traffic congestion to surrounding, single-family housing communities? People bought homes in Palmdale to avoid living in a high-density environment." I also have a correction to a comment in which I presented under a general comment. It was re-received under this item, so I'm going to read it into the record under this item. "First of all, I am disappointed in the planning commission to have a meeting and such impact on local neighborhoods, schools, traffic, and safety for the citizens of Palmdale. Very shady of the planning commission. You need to wait till people of Palmdale can attend the open meeting and talk to you directly. Hope you do not make a decision tonight. Linda Davis, resident of Palmdale since 1972. Everyone is shut down. You should cancel your meeting until everyone can attend. Linda Davis, 20th and Rancho Vista Project." Next comment, Joyce Rand. "I strongly object to this zone change. There are already apartments going in on 15th Street West and Lancaster Boulevard. We do not need more apartments in this area. This project will have a negative impact on property values for me and my neighbors and a detrimental effect on our neighborhood as well as the coyotes who live in the field. The corner of my project abuts a field on 20th West and Rancho Vista. The only thing that should be allowed here are single-stories, single-family homes." Next comment. "In regards to your project on 20th Street West, we are in favor of the development in our community. Mark Stevens." Oh, I apologize. Joyce Rand had an amendment to her original comment. She also stated that this will negatively impact the Great Horned Owls, the nests in the trees, and hunt in the fields. Sandra Fields. "Hello, I am a resident on Rancho Vista Boulevard and 20th. Where will be a planning commission meeting on April 9 regarding a parcel on the northeast corner of 20th and Rancho Vista Boulevard. William Keller and associates want to construct apartment complexes or residences. My main concern regarding this is, issue is traffic. We have plenty of serious accidents on 20th and Rancho Vista Boulevard and the already congested morning and after work commute. There is a four-square church already located in this corner and apparently more to be built. We don't need the extra noise either." Stacy Walker. "Against any planned development of apartments, including triplexes in the planned area, the developer has mitigated negative impact on the environment, but has failed to mitigate increases in traffic, crime, population density, and adverse impact to the community of thus far, single-family homes. It seems the developer tries to listen, lessen the increase in occupants' density by using triplexes to describe what is essentially a three-unit apartment with potential for unstated occupancy due to unstated individual bedroom unit. Please keep our neighborhood zone for single-family residents." Robert and Vicky Fields. 1837 Windsor Place, Palmdale Boulevard, or sorry, Palmdale, California. "This letter is in regards to the construction project proposed for the intersection of 20th Street West and Rancho Vista Boulevard. At our address on Windsor Place, our backyard and main living space, including the master bedroom, face Rancho Vista Boulevard with only five-feet wall and a sidewalk separating us from what will now be a six, six lanes of traffic. The proposed project houses apartments and duplexes on 20th and further east on 15th Street where the new Sprouts project with additional housing being built there. I fully support the need for more housing and more lanes and do not object to these projects being built. However, the noise level, even with the reduced traffic due to the current stay-at-home order, is already becoming too much. We are at street level and the constant flow of regular traffic, modified vehicles, motorcycles, trucks, buses, and sirens render our backyard almost unusable. If you wish to have a conversation, even with just the current four lanes of traffic, it can also sometimes keep us from falling asleep. There are the, we are of the opinion that the project should include sound protection along Rancho Vista Boulevard for all houses at street level up to and including wall enhancements that would significantly reduce the amount of noise in and around our homes at the expense of the project. Also, this should apply for new homes being built that face the street. We would like at least the same quality of life as the neighbors just across." We would like at least the same quality of life as the neighbors just across the street from us whose property value. The same as ours for the same sized property. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Respectfully, Robert and Vicky Fields. I just heard there are plans to build luxury apartments at twentieth street west and Rancho Vista Boulevard. I have lived in Palmdale all my life, some sixty-two years. And I would love to see more luxury apartments built or even condominiums. The location is great. Please consider approving this project. Audrey Miller. I just want to write a quick email about the housing project twenty street west Rancho Vista Boulevard. I am in support of this project as this will greatly help the housing shortage in AV. And provide a nice environment for many people looking to relocate here in the AV. I hope we can get this built as soon as possible and the city desperately needs it. Thank you for your time. Michael Jackson. Good afternoon. I understand that Cage LLC has proposed a change in the tentative track map over Rancho Vista Boulevard and twentieth street west. And the city council will take this under consideration this evening. As you are aware, we have a shortage of houses here in the Antelope Valley and we need options on different types of homes. We no longer just need single family residents. We need to give our community options. There are nine point five million people who rent here in California and the Antelope Valley does not have their fair share of revenue from luxury apartments. Currently, our residents who want a higher end apartment or luxury apartment have to commute out of the Antelope Valley into Santa Clarita. These are people who work here in the AV. Year over year, there have been a steady increase in apartment buildings in Los Angeles. And it continues to gain momentum with luxury apartments trending. Where is Palmdale in this? One out of three Americans rent. Why not rent here in Palmdale? We are behind the times and quite frankly need to play catch up. I look forward to this being a step in the right direction. I hope city council approves this change and I hope there are many more to come. When you give residents quality homeowner opportunities, it will create a snowball effect for all businesses in the AV. Thank you. Shauna Rusgli. I apologize for mispronunciation of names. Good afternoon. I hope you are doing well. We are in support of your new housing project located located off of twentieth street west. Thank you, Shauna. Those are all of the public comments received.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak on this project? If so, please come forward and state your name and you will have thirty minutes. If the applicant is here, I would request that you please come forward because I know we have questions.
Hello, commissioners, I'm Greg Arnold, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Hi there, welcome.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the staff. They've done a wonderful job. We've been working with them for quite some time. Had many ups and downs and challenges to get this project to this point, so I really appreciate their time and effort that they put in.
Thank you. And what is your relation to the project?
I'm the developer.
You are the developer himself. Alright, thank you.
Have you uh developed other projects like that? You wouldn't have to have pictures of what they wind up.
You know, as a matter of fact, we do, um, perhaps we can pull some of those up. They're not in any specific order, but I'm happy to show you some of the amenities and some of. Of how some of the elevations and the interiors look on a project like this. Specifically, it's gonna be to the multi-family more than the the single family residence. That's fairly common. And the the tri- well, the triplexes are a bit of a different product. They're a for sale product. And are still finished to the same levels as what we'll see in um the apartment. So if we can scroll to the next one perhaps. And I'm not sure what order these in, so I might have to go back and forth with you. Uh, again, the next one please. Okay, so this is an example inside the apartments of the uh, this is a one bedroom apartment, uh, and this is inside the bedroom itself. This is a product that I've just finished uh in Las Vegas, uh, very similar as far as the floor plans, layouts and the finishes. Next slide, please. This is an example of a two bedroom inside of the kitchen area. Uh, you can see that we upgrade the appliances. These are included appliances inside of the space. The flooring, carpet, uh, you actually have options inside of the apartments to choose from. The the electrical fixtures that you see there are standard. Uh, and are a typical upgrade for us, but there are no uh options to upgrade those as we feel very strongly that those. Lend quite well to the space. Um, you can see the cabinets, microwave, and if you go to the next side, please, we'll have another look at the kitchen. Uh, refrigerator, range, hood that exhausts out the roof, uh, countertop space. We've been doing these, I built, I think, oh, nearly eight thousand apartments uh in my tenure. And uh, we've found floor plans that work quite well. What's interesting about this particular uh floor plan, and I don't know if we have. An elevation of the overall apartment inside of of this document, but if we don't, it's okay. Um, each of the in the multi-family, each of the residences have a separate entrance, a separate enclosed entrance. So as you come to the apartment, rather than seeing metal stairs on the outside and perhaps a breezeway. What you see in these apartments is you see a person approach their home and it is a private entrance for their home. If they're on the second floor, the entrance is around the other side, they enter into their own home. And they go up the stairs into the second into the second floor where their where their home is. We can go ahead to the next slide. So the reason we do that is for security. Um, this is an example of of the bathroom, uh, so we use to to speak to some of the water comments that were made. We we use low flow toilets, we use low flow faucets, uh, we use LED lighting in all of the apartments. That mirror particular has LED LED lights in the background, uh, granite countertops. Then go to the next slide, please. This is an example of what's provided inside of the closets. Uh, for storage and this is this is moving ready except for the staging furniture, of course. Uh, next slide, please. This is an example of inside the clubhouse. This is kind of a coffee bar area. This is complimentary to the resident. They're they're welcome to go in there and enjoy that at any time they wish. Uh, next slide, please. This is an example of a smaller portion of a fitness center that's provided within their within the space for them to use uh twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Next slide, please. This is the larger fitness area where we can conduct classes as well as, you know, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week fitness for for the resident. Go ahead to the next slide, please. Another example of uh of a different configuration of the kitchen area. Similar, go to the next slide, please. Another example of the bedroom. This is the master bedroom. It has two entry uh two entry points essentially. You see the bathroom there. As you enter the bathroom, it also has a door on the right to go out into the living space. Um, on the the closet is actually, that's where the picture being taken from? That's the view from the closet. Yeah, that's the entry door from the main area. And then if you go to the bathroom, in this particular case, there's another door that goes out. Into the living space. Uh, next slide, please. Um, this is a close up view of the sauna that's inside of the uh the clubhouse. Go ahead to the next slide. Washers and dryers are included in all the apartments as as part of their uh, as as part of the amenity of the apartments. So we found that rather than having onsite laundry facilities as a pay per use. We find this amenity to be much, much more conducive to people moving in and enjoying their space. Um, we've also found that at least in the state of California, this is somewhat unique. Uh, to actually have your appliances included inside of your space. Uh, next slide, please. We might end up refuting some of these. This is a clubhouse that I've just finished as well. Um, this is the business center inside of the clubhouse, uh, very open. Uh, we provide both uh PC and Apple computers for people to use as well as a printer. So if they are working from home. They can work either from their apartment or they can use the community wifi inside of the clubhouse space. The clubhouse is also used as the leasing office, so it's staffed full time um during regular business hours. As well as we have uh onsite staff for maintenance. Those are also full time employees as well. And it's onsite management.
It's all rentals.
For the multi-family, it's all rentals and market rate housing. That's correct.
And um, is there going to be like a requirement that they sign a a one year lease? Or will they be shorter term rentals or a mixture of short term and long term?
We have a mixture of short term and long term. The preferred term is a one year lease. That's what we usually see. The rent for a month to month or six month lease gets bumped substantially higher, I'd say one to two hundred dollars per month for a short term lease. Um, we do not allow inside of our properties anything like Airbnb or something like that to take place. So let's say, for example, you have um a corporate use where they're renting an apartment. They might have individuals coming in and out. Different executives that may use the apartment. That's fine. They still s- sign a long term lease. At times, we have residents that just need to go month to month because perhaps they're building a home and perhaps they're building a home. In our planned development and just awaiting it for it for it to finish. We do accommodate that. But we encourage through our program and through the amenities and through the rents. Uh, it's encouraged that they sign a minimum of one year lease and then renew at at the end of that term.
So you're showing us very nice apartments and a very nice complex. Will the one you build here be of the same standard?
I cannot for, that's a great question.
Because usually we get the stripped down version where they build it here and they put the nice one in Valencia and they put the stripped down one here.
You know, it's a great question and and it's a fair question because I've been in the apartments around in this area and you know the. This is a in with the apartment complex, this apartment complex is three hundred and twenty units, which is a larger ap- apartment complex for the area. Um, the last time that we had that kind of density in Palmdale, that was built with anything over a hundred units, this market rate was nineteen eighty-eight. So it's been a long time since you've had a new apartment complex built.
Not only do we need a new complex, we need a new upscale complex.
You'll be happy to know I can't build anything less than this. This is my downgrade. Believe it or not. Now, I can't take credit for how nice that looks. That's my interior designer, but. That is, that's where we end up.
But the the materials, you're not.
The, no, not at all, absolutely. Yes, these, these materials and these finishes that you see here are typical. This is, this is standard form. I could upgrade from here, but I found I don't need to. Um, and we're doing this on a very consistent basis. Um, I'm out of Las Vegas, so what you're seeing here are, this one just finished six months ago, this particular one. This is called Revolution. Uh, the other one that you're seeing is called Aviator. Uh, the one that we're looking at today, I've initially named Arrow. Um, we'll see what where that name lands. But uh, we'll have a large, about a five two, I haven't completely decided. Right now, I think Megan, we're showing a five thousand square foot clubhouse. Give or take, uh, if I recall in the planned development document.
So in your phasing, would you be doing the apartments first?
We'll be doing the apartments first, uh, and one thing that uh Megan mentioned while she was presenting that is that in in the phasing. She may not have mentioned it um through her uh presentation, but all of the infrastructure for the entire development will be done in phase one. So all of the sewer water hookups for single family triplexes and for the multi-family will all all be completed in phase one. Phase one being the multi-family portion. So we'll grade the whole site, get everything ready, bring all the hookups, make all the improvements. Put all the exterior sidewalks, curb and gutter, everything we need to put in in phase one. The multi-family is the first phase, then it shields, I'm sorry, I'm shivering, I'm cold in Las from Las Vegas. I've been freezing all day. So um, the first phase really is the biggest portion of it. It's about a. A seventy million dollar project just in the first phase to get it completed. And then from there, we'll have all the hookups, all the streets, all the roads, all the sidewalks ready to connect for the multi-family and for the single family.
In regards to that map, what is that empty vacant chunk in the middle?
We would love to have your help in the community, help us get a hold of that parcel. The owner of the parcel has uh simply said he doesn't wanna sell. Uh, and we've offered him, what we just say, Phil, three times beyond the market price? Yeah, um, we we've offered him a very tidy sum. He is welcome at any time to come join us in this effort. I I believe though, if I'm not mistaken, what if the planning commission approves this, that I believe his parcel will have to come into line. With the improvements and with the planned development document, is that correct? Not a part. So as he comes in though, hopefully we can find a compliment as your way to work.
But he's got an island in the middle of your development.
A lovely island to to which one of the conditions is we give access to, which we've done. And uh, we we are in contact with the owner. Uh, we're just hopeful that at some point he'll come to the table. He doesn't have to sell to us necessarily, but we would like his project to be complimentary.
And I do, uh, some of the concerns that we heard from in the um public comments section. Um, read by Ms. Saxton, uh, traffic is obviously a huge concern. And this is from people on both sides of Rancho Vista that I was determining from their addresses. Any?
Well, what we see, absolutely. So one of the reasons that uh we chose this site was the accessibility to all the shopping. And all the areas as well as to the fourteen that's just down the road. What what we find in these apartment complexes is through the traffic patterns. And also with the single family is you do have a heavier traffic pattern during the work hours where everyone is commuting. At night, times like that, the traffic pattern, people stay home. They don't travel in and out that much. We'll see an increased percentage overall in traffic by percentage by per capita of how many homes are in the area. But a massive traffic problem, a massive influx, just in the times of rush hour in the morning, would you see that? And outside of that, we really don't see it. You know, they're they're in and out of their homes a little bit. And because the shopping and things is so close to them, you know, I've walked it myself a few times. It's about a five to seven minute walk. It's reasonable. Um, we've mitigated that by. You know, first of all, the city of Palmdale is already expanding the area there on Rancho, so. We're fortunate with that. We'll have a deceleration lane for people to turn right as well as to turn into the entry point, the deceleration lane that we have will. Will also include the entry into the multi-family and into the triplex areas. So as they, and if they need to decelerate to go onto twentieth, then they decelerate and go down to twentieth.
My understanding is it's right turn in, right turn out on the Rancho side, correct?
Yes, it's not a full movement on the Rancho, so where the apartment complex there at the bottom in the middle, that is right turn in, right turn out only.
I can just see that.
It's a little too dangerous to come across.
I know.
That traffic.
But I I can see now, I mean, my thought would be just traffic wise, if I lived in the area, I'm gonna be concerned about that intersection at twentieth of everybody flipping a U there.
Absolutely, it's a great concern. What I've experienced in the past and I I I don't necessarily want to suggest it, but what I've experienced in the past is. When twentieth gets finished, depending on where that medium comes, sometimes I'm asked to extend it. To help to eliminate anybody squirting across and causing a traffic problem. Uh, the median may be extended down to the entry on twentieth. We'll see as we go through the the rest of the process, but uh. Right now, that's not the case, but it may be. I'm not opposed to it.
And I know Commissioner French talked about uh concerns with the trash, which I also noticed too. Why are we shortening that? But the parking, I do know, um, Caltrans actually said, go reduce your parking spaces. Cause if we reduce parking spaces, ideally, we're gonna reduce cars and vehicles and all of that that we're attempting to reduce in California, so. I see that you're complying with what Caltrans is asking for in that reduction of parking spaces, but the trash kind of concerned me a little.
Sure, and and it is a concern and I understand your question, of course. Um, if I can answer that in a way, we use a matrix based on the number of apartments that we have in the space. And we use fifteen yard dumpsters enclosed in each of these spaces. What we find is we need anywhere between seven and ten dumps dumpsters. And then what we do is we increase the frequency and we pay for this uh through the management and the fees is we pay for increased uh. Garbage removal. So we have the trucks come in sometimes three times a week to make sure that the track that the trash is removed. That can sometimes be a challenge depending on the services that are in the area. But when we're offsetting their costs for those extra trips, then they're not, they're okay with it. Another thing that we do as well, and I'm considering it in this one, but I do it in the other apartments is. There's a trash concierge service as well, where people, rather than people walking out to their. To the dumpster to take their trash, it's actually done for them. It's a service, uh, an amenity where they just, we we provide them their receptacle for their apartment. They set the receptacle outside and a service comes, takes the trash away, puts it in the in the dumpsters and they don't have to deal with it except for. Outside of their home. Seems uh kinda crazy, but it's quite popular.
Well, it makes me wonder.
Yes.
Point for these apartments.
Pardon me?
It makes me wonder what the price point will be for these apartments.
That's a great question. Um, I'm lower than your current market rate.
Okay.
Substantially. It will be the market rate, but my pro forma and my budget for this project, the way that it works. I can build these for lower than the current market rate in the area. So let me explain that just a little bit further. Right now, if you go, if if I may use a term that's used in Palmdale, down the hill. And um, you're paying over three dollars a square foot in some areas for market rate housing for your apartment complex. Basic math on that, you have a thousand square foot place, you're paying three thousand dollars, quite expensive. Right now, we're seeing the rents in Palmdale for a thousand square feet or maybe a bit less. Let's say a studio apartment, four to five hundred square feet is about two seventy square foot in Palmdale. Believe it or not for rent, that's market rate. If you bring it down to a one bedroom or to a two bedroom bedroom. It comes down into about the two thirty and then two fifteen and then down to two oh five per square foot, which is fairly reasonable. It's still substantially more than what I'm seeing in other markets. But if if I go to the local uh apartment complexes here now, that are market rate. Uh, it's over two dollars a square foot, each one of them, and and those are the, those are the numbers that I'm using. So my build cost and my development cost is lower than that. So I will be able to offer these at a lower rate than what we're seeing in the current market. But when we refer to market rate, basically what we're saying is there's no affordable component. By percentage or by unit count inside of the development. So from that standpoint, it's market rate.
Alright, does anybody else have questions for the applicant?
I have one more question. On the uh clubhouse and the place where you go get your coffee and whatnot. So obviously that's just for the residents, but. If somebody just wanders in there, do they have a have to have a key to get in or?
So the the area is secured by key fob, by electronic key fob. So after hours, for example, there are areas of clubhouse that are locked off. For example, the leasing offices inside of the clubhouse. Those are can, those are separate actual offices, they're glass, but they're locked off. The pool is key fob access only. The clubhouse certain areas is key fob access only. The so after hours, we set those times to say, you know, you're not necessarily having a coffee party or whatever the case might be, you have people coming in, getting free whatever. They'll come and do that during business hours, so and we do have that occur on occasion, which is fine, because then we engage them with the leasing people. And uh, one way or the other, there there will either, you know, have a nice chat with them or else they lease an apartment. So and then for the rest of the amenities, it's all key fob access as well. And then I'm not sure, I haven't gone down far. You know, so far down the road here, but depending on what the approvals are for pools and spas and things like that, we'll. Make accommodation to make sure that the hours are being reflected on what the community standard is.
Great, thank you. And on those triplexes?
Yeah.
Those will be i- in a different phase. Will those be um leased to or owner occupied or?
Well, those are a for sale product, but at the same time, they are managed by uh. The leasing office that is in the apartment complex. So if someone wanted to buy that apartment. Or buy that triplex and lease it out, they they'd be welcome to do that. It's it's their property at the end of the day. But if and also if somebody wanted to come in and buy an entire building of that triplex and own it and then rent it and lease it out. There they could do that as well.
So you could buy one unit in a tri- in a.
You could buy one unit in the triplex, you could buy all three units in the triplex. Cause as as it's developed, those will be mapped with the map to where each one of those triplex units is titled in its own. As its own home.
And each have a separate APN number?
That's correct. When would we like to have it completed? Two years ago. Right now, um. Once we hopefully make it through the uh entitlement process, we hope to um as soon as possible get into the uh. Uh, the city council and then from there, I've gotta finish the plans and put them into building. I hope to start this third quarter of this year would be a bit aggressive. But I think it's possible to do. Have we not had this pandemic that slowed things down a little bit? Um, I've I've had the investment and everything else lined up for some time. And so we can go fairly quickly, but there there we do have some work left to do. So I'm hoping by the end of third quarter this year.
And when you sell those triplex, you sell it um three unit triplexes, each one of them has an HOA due on it, HOA dues?
So the HOA is it or the management side is as Megan put, there is it's kind of a. We consider the management to be the HOA, so. The HOA or the management will be overseeing the triplex as I mentioned. So any HOA fees would go to the management company and that would all be maintained by the management company. And just flow from the apartment complex management.
So if somebody bought the whole four, the whole triplex.
Sure.
And they didn't wanna use the management, would they have, would they have dues?
Um, they would still have dues for the common areas. That's all. I haven't determined what those dues are for the HOA as of yet, but for example, the landscaping, you know, street work, things like that. They would, they wouldn't be responsible for things like their roof repair, you know, things like that are included inside.
It would be like a CAM more than an HOA.
Kind of a CAM more than HOA.
That's really out of our purview.
I'm happy to answer any question.
Our decision making points here, but any other questions for the applicant?
Okay.
Alright, well, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak on this project? Alright, then may I please get a motion to close the public hearing? Come on, give me a second. Alright, I have an motion in a second. Otherwise, we're sitting here for a really long time. Um, alright, if there is no objection, then I shall close the public hearing on this item. And that brings us to Commissioner Discussion.
Well, I like the project and I'm looking forward towards its completion and I loved the presentation. Um, from the city staff as well as the developers, so great job, thank you. And I'm looking for market rate really too.
I wanna thank you, Ms. Saxton, for bringing all of the public comments to our attention. I found it interesting that it was about half and half that we got from the public was half in support and half um opposed. And I do understand the concerns of the neighbors with the noise and the traffic and any change is always a little bit frightening. Especially since they just. You know, recently had the other development um in that area that's a little bit. Stressful on them, I believe. I'm concerned about con- te- continuous look of that whole stretch. We we have our mall, then we have what's vacant at this point supposedly gonna be sprouts in some apartments, then we have a little chunk of housing. And then the rest of it is all zoned to be single family residential, which I understand. And then we have the church and then we have more nothing and then we have a park. So I I'm. Concerned about the location because of the single family residence. And there's an awful lot we are tasked with this evening. There's a lot in this one little item eighty. There's a general plan amendment plus a zone change, plus two track maps, plus approving the plan development and the site plan review. So I I think that's. From my head, it's an awful lot. Um, and I have a pretty big head, you guys, so for me to say, yeah, that's a lot. I think the staff did a very good job in presenting this. I I very detailed, all the maps were fantastic and. I did open and close every one of them, just so you know, okay? And I actually looked at them, I didn't just open and close them, I actually looked at them, but. It's just a lot, I think. I think it's good, but I am, I'm concerned for the residents in that little. In the area that are all thinking they were going to be surrounded by single family and I know that we are tasked. Um, with our reigning numbers to have higher density housing and more housing available, so. Guess I'll say I'm conflicted, but.
Well, I think that these types of projects are needed here. Um, I've got kids from graduating high school through their thirties. And it's very difficult for them to find places to live here. They're moving away, they're living in Rosemont. Uh, because as you're starting out, there's there's nowhere to go. There's no rentals are at a premium, as he said, we're. Our rentals now are hitting two, three thousand dollars a month, which is, you know, the cost of purchasing a home. Uh, but they need to save up for a down payment, which they can't do in a rental. Um, and a lot of the rentals that are available are up in Lancaster and they're becoming more and more expensive. And so we do need housing like this. I'm just concerned at the density of it. Um, that area is the perfect place for it. Um, unfortunately for the people that live around there, having the mall there, all of the public transportation is around there, sprouts and all that is growing, it's. It's turning into an area that is apartment rich, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. When you consider these higher end apartments are marketing to Northrop and um to those those that bring people in. Uh, for the summer and um, we've had people in our church housing people because there's nowhere for them to stay. Um, so it's definitely needed. Um, I just hope that they do uh come through. As you say, with the level that they're that they're saying and that it's not um priced so high that it just becomes. Uh, one more rental unit that nobody can afford. But people will because there's nothing else, but then we've still got these middles that they're not necessarily low income housing. But they're not ready for two, three thousand a month either. So I I think it looks like a good project. Other than the density, which will bring in a lot of traffic, so. I like how you're taking care of the trash. There you go.
I was actually kind of hoping there was gonna be an access into that residence to the east and I I. Cause that their big concern when we were doing the previous project was they had only one way in and one way out and I was hoping maybe. And I realized they probably don't want it. They probably don't want you, they don't want anything to do with you, I'm sure, but. Yeah, so I I that was kind of my hope and thought, but um.
Well, thank you, Angela. That's some good points you brought up there too. Having children in that age range that are looking for things and.
You know, I've been, I've I've talked about that busiest intersection in the Antelope Valley before, um. But I mean, that whole Rancho Vista Boulevard didn't exist when I first moved out here. I mean, the world ended down there at about uh P and Thirty Street West. And if you continue on down there and you look at what's what's gone down, gone in down there, it's a lot of single family, but there's a Walmart center in there now. And it's great. And then you continue around the turn there and what do you run into? You run into, is it a a mobile home park, right? And I'm sure when that mobile home park went in, people were not too happy about that, but. I drive by that almost every day and it's it's quiet, it's nice, there's hundreds of them in there. The traffic's not out of control and it's just something that's necessary. Just like these apartments are necessary because we have s- hundreds if not thousands of aerospace people that need a place like that to live in. So I'm very happy about this.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. Any other comments? Wanna make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number PC twenty twenty fourteen recommending city council approve. General Plan Amendment eighteen dash oh oh three and Zone Change eighteen oh oh three. Approve tentative track maps eighty eight twenty one seventy four and eight twenty one seventy five. Plan Development eighteen dash oh oh two and Site Plan Review eighteen oh oh six. And adopt the mitigated negative deck and mitigated monitoring and reporting program prepared for the project.
Alright, I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson. And a second from Commissioner Avery. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, then we shall call for the question. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much for coming and now leave. Alright then.
He's actually very nice.
Is there anything to do in Las Vegas right now? Just curious.
We actually drove through there a couple of weeks ago and every, all the billboards said, see you later.
Alright, item nine is Staff Communications, Ms. Saxton.
Thank you, um, so a couple of things, um, so we have a draft agenda. We have a couple of items um coming before you. Are you being planned to come before you in May? Um, as you all know, um. Uh, Commissioner French's French position is um being advertised, so we hope to have a. Individuals to take your place, um, unfortunately, fortunately for them. Um, a new tem- team member to be on the planning commission by our next meeting, so we don't have a lapse. Um, obviously you will be updated on that. So that is really it for Staff Communications. I hope you all stay um healthy and safe. Thank you so much for this evening. I believe that uh.
Before we, yeah, could you um tell us about some of this new staff hiring that has gone on?
Yeah, so uh, Mr. Drew Fletcher.
Well, that helps so we can make sure it's really you there. Are you sure?
We're all uh familiar with, uh, who has sat on the attorney side, has um come over to. The Economic and Community Development Department as the other deputy director. Um, I am maintaining that position as well, so we have two deputy directors to steward our economic development um through the city. Um, it's really an exciting time to have um more staff to be able to really see that effort through. Um, we also have a new planning aide who is Beverly. She is wonderful. Um, we have Jasmine, who's new planning assistant, also wonderful, and Ben, who is our new senior planner. Who is great as well, so we are actually at the same amount of staff that we were at last February. So believe it or not, we've been operating at a deficit for over a year, um. Yeah, we're pretty excited to actually have full staff back. Um, so yeah, maybe we'll spread the love and you guys will see some new faces up here pretty soon.
Alright.
And I think we have something.
Okay, yes, so at this time, Ms. French, you're still Ms. French, you're not Mrs. Anybody yet, right? And hopefully we'll be able to become Mrs. Somebody when all this craziness ends. But at this time, Angela, I would like to present you with a commendation. And it has a lot of wherestes and wherefores and therefores, but basically it is talking about your service to the Planning Commission. From August eleventh twenty sixteen through April ninth twenty twenty. And you served as vice chair of this distinguished body from February eighth twenty eighteen to February fourteenth twenty nineteen. You helped approve several zoning ordinance amendments, cell phone communication towers, as well as the expansion of the Aerospace Academy. Juniper Grove Housing Development, Meta Housing for Veterans and countless other development projects and issues of community concern. And during your deliberation of these many development projects and policy issues, you are a vigorous proponent of improving residential development standards. And the creative treatment of telecommunications facilities. And you encourage the application of all other design standards that improve the quality of life for the residents of this community. Therefore, the Planning Commission of the City of Palmdale does hereby find, determine and resolve. That Vice Chair French has made a significant positive, long reaching contribution to the quality of life in this community through her. Thorough deliberation of each development application and her dedication to achieve excellence in every project. The Planning Commission hereby extends its sincerest appreciation to Angela French. For the prominent role she has played in achieving the goals of our community and we bid you well in your future endeavors.
Well, thank you very kindly. Thank you, Stacia.
Thank you, Angela, for all of your service.
Thank you. It has been my pleasure to serve. I was actually very surprised to find that it had been four years. I thought. I had only served three and then I was leaving midterm, uh, and then I was reminded that it had indeed been four years, so. I have enjoyed every moment of it. It was truly a growing, learning experience and I've enjoyed working with all of you and those who came before you and. Um, with the staff has been phenomenal. Rob was fantastic and. Um, it's really been my pleasure, so thank you, all of you very much and thank you, Stacia.
Alright, thank you. And are there any other Planning Commission communications? Oh, I'm sorry, let me go back to number nine. Staff Communications, our city manager is in attendance and I know that cause his jacket says city manager on it.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I really have no role showing up here, but I actually came tonight because I wanted to thank you on behalf of the city. Uh, I know. You guys volunteer, you put hours in, you go to training, you do all those things and it's to make the community better, so. For all your service, I wanted to be here just to be able to say thank you for everything and I wish you a lot of luck in the future.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Uh, can I just say one thing before you leave? City Manager, I wanna just commend you and the city council and the mayor. On the unbelievable amount of information that you're doing in terms of keeping the city of Palmdale informed. I get these videos. The YouTube, the, I'm I'm, I mean, you guys have just given us a lot of information. Uh, during this crisis and so I want to commend you and the city council and the mayor for doing an awesome job during this crisis and pray we get through it. Um, but keep up the great work.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I didn't give you time to. I didn't give you time to speak, Noel, I feel badly, did you have any staff communications? Okay. Alright, any other planning commission communications? Alright, then we shall adjourn our longest meeting ever, until our next meeting of May fourteenth, twenty twenty at seven PM.